We'll call to order the City of Douglasville's City Council Regular Meeting for tonight, Monday, February 21, 2022. I'll please ask that our invocation will be done by the Reverend Brian Barry Hill of Heritage Baptist Church, and after that, the Pledge Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Thank you again for this opportunity. Let us pray. Dear Lord and Heavenly Father, we come to you again tonight. Thank the Lord for another opportunity just to call on your name. Thank the Lord for each and everyone that's here, Lord, for our mayor, this city council, not only them, but, Lord, the homes they represent. I pray, Lord, that you'd help them, Lord, tonight, in any matter of business, Lord, that might be taking place in the community. You give them wisdom and knowledge, Lord, and discernment to make good decisions. Give them unity. Help our community, Lord, to be in unity, one with another. Help us to learn to love one another again. And, Lord, just have your will in each way, each one of our lives. And, Lord, we'd be so careful, Lord, to give you the praise, honor, and glory for it all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem and Pastor Barry Hill, for that poignant prayer. We appreciate that invocation. We do have announcements and presentations. This evening we'll have an audit presentation by Malden and Jenkins, Meredith Lipson. And after that, then we will do, well, I'll go through the protocol of the meeting after we have our presentation. So at this point, please come to the microphone, please. And Ms. Lipson, please give us, Lipson, please give us your name and address for the record. And then we do have it uploaded, the councilmembers, to our iPads. So you all want to do that? Or you want to go in the front and watch? This is going to be on the screen. Looks like no one wants to move, so. We have it, but the audience can see, and the people that are viewing the screen. So, thank you so much. Indis yourself, and you're free to do the presentation.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
My name is Meredith Lipson. I'm an audit partner with Malden and Jenkins. My address is 302 Abington River Lane, Atlanta. And I believe you all have the presentations on your laptops, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Get started. And now, there's quite a number of pages, and I'm just going to really hit the highlights for you all, but certainly feel free to stop me, or if you have questions, I'm more than happy to address those. Just a little bit of information, Malden and Jenkins, we are one of the largest providers of governmental audit and accounting services in the southeast, and very much appreciate the opportunity to work with the City of Douglasville. Again, I am engagement partner, along with James Benz, and we had a quality assurance partner that did final quality assurance reviews as well for the audit. Our responsibility under government auditing standards, the financial statements are the responsibility of management. Our responsibility is to express an opinion based on our audit procedures. We did issue an unmodified, clean opinion on the basic financial statements. We issued the audit report December 14, and it was filed timely with the Department of Audits, meeting their December 31 deadline, as well as with the Government Finance Officers Association for the Certificate of Achievement Award. We also issued a report in accordance with government auditing standards. We had one finding that we'll, we'll mention in just a few minutes. And we also issued a single audit report. You all expended greater than $750,000 in federal funds in fiscal year '21, and therefore were required to undergo a single audit. That entailed specific compliance and internal control testing over the U.S. Department of Treasury Coronavirus Relief Funds. Those were the coronavirus funding that you all received. There are certain items that we, as auditors, are required to communicate to you all under the standards that guide us, and I'm certainly not going to read through all of these, but those involve significant accounting policies, accounting estimates, financial statement disclosures. We did have a few audit adjustments that were posted and have been provided to management and recorded to the books and records of the city. There were no consultation or significant issues as part of the audit process, and we are independent with respect to the city and its component units. The pie chart that's on page nine, that basically shows you all the various sources of revenues for the city. As with most governments, 11.1 million in property taxes, 8.6 million in sales taxes. Those generally are the largest revenues that we see with all of our governments. Your revenues for fiscal year '21 were approximately 36.9 million. Previous year were approximately 32.3 million. So significant increase in your revenues brought on by the increase in the property tax values under the, with your digest, as well as the receipt of the Coronavirus Relief Funding. General fund expenditures, those totaled for fiscal year '21 totaled 29 million. The largest portion of those, approximately 12 million, is public safety, and that is pretty much the norm with most, most governments. The expenses, again, were approximately 29 million, just slightly less the previous year of approximately 30 million. The next graph, you can see a five-year history of your revenues and expenditures. And as you can see, for fiscal year '21, your revenues exceeded your expenditures, and quite a bit more than they have in the past. It was approximately $6 million, $6.5 million increase, as you can see on this chart here. $6.5 million increase to your fund balance for fiscal Your general fund expenditures, when you look at the expenditures compared to your fund balance in June 30, 2021, you all had approximately 293 days of expenditures in your fund balance. So you have a very strong fund balance at the end of your fiscal year. As far as comments and recommendations from the audit process, we did have one audit finding that had to do with the accrual of some invoices. This is not, it sounds bad when you say "a finding," I guess, but this is certainly nothing to be concerned at all about. It's basically an audit adjustment that we made due to timing of the receipt of your invoices and the posting of those amounts to your fiscal year 2021. But as auditors, our hands are kind of tied as far as what we report as findings. But again, nothing to be of concern about at all. And then we did have one recommendation related to the replacement of the interbank offer, intra-bank offer rates. Your 2005 revenue bonds were issued at a variable rate on the one-month LIBOR, and that is going away. And so we just recommend that that be looked at to make sure that you all have, are able to get the contracts and things in place before that, that LIBOR rate goes away. The remaining pages, information pertaining to new Gatsby pronouncements that are out there, we will certainly stay in contact with your, your finance department to make sure that they are aware of when those are coming out, and that everybody's on the same page as far as the financial reporting for those. But I'm certainly not going to go through all of those with you guys. And finally, we do, we do mention that we do have continuing education classes for our clients only that are free on a quarterly basis, as well as newsletters. And if any of you all are ever interested in participating in any of that, please, if you'll let us know, we'd love to add you to, to our email list for that. I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to, to serve the City of Douglasville. You all are very fortunate. You have an excellent finance department. They really do a great job, and, and again, you're very fortunate to have them. It's a very good job, a very good, clean audit. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to address those.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? I did want Ms. Lipson to kind of explain the finding, and how the finance chair and I met prior to the meeting with the finance director and city manager, and so we were able to get a better understanding. And so if you don't mind, just explaining that situation to the full council.
Sure. So during the audit process, we noted, or we came across a couple of invoices that were for services provided prior to June 30, so prior to the end of your fiscal year. Well, you didn't receive the invoices until, I believe, July, but because they were for services before your year-end, that amount needed to be recorded as an accounts payable and an expenditure of fiscal year '21. And so that was an audit adjustment that we had to make, and due to the dollar amount of it, which I think was like $183,000, and, and the fund that it was in, it became a finding. And again, it was a timing difference. You know, it's a test that we do of subsequent dispersments with all, all of our audits, looking to make sure that your expenditures are recorded in the proper year. And one just slipped through the cracks. I mean, you all have the controls in place to catch those, but things happen. And, and again, it's, it's a timing difference, and just a journal entry that had to be posted.
Okay. Thank you so much. Committee Chairman, do you'd like to make a comment?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Lipson, we want to thank you for bringing, for bringing the report to us.
Absolutely.
And of course, we're fortunate and thankful that we have received a good report, and I just want to make sure that we let everyone know in the finance department how much we appreciate them. I know it's been a tough year. A lot of extra things have come on us with COVID, a lot of the extra reporting that has to be done, and preparations have to be done. But thank you for being here with us, and
Absolutely.
We appreciate Malden and Jenkins continuing to take care of us that way. Thank you. That's all I had, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Do we have any other comments from the elected officials? I don't see any city manager or staff respond to the remedies that have been put in place to catch any, this mistake that, it was just really like an invoice was done, and it hadn't been paid yet, or it was just a, a timing thing, but how, what stoppers we have in place now to prevent that in the future.
Ms. Callen may want to come and address
Okay.
what additional things she has in place. But we have those things in place. But what I will state to you is, I think this is a matter of new staff.
Okay.
This is, this is a product of Ms. Callen having 10 new employees.
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Karen Callen, Finance Director, 6695 Church Street. Yes, what, we have discussed this many times internally with my office, and we actually had one person dedicated to reviewing all the check dispersments at the end of the fiscal year. All these, these three invoices were on one check run, and they had a due date of July 29. And the new person that was reviewing the invoices assumed that was for the service period of July. So we actually went through with her and discussed. We had her write an Excel sheet and document all the invoices that she did catch, because there were some that we did book back in the prior fiscal year that were correct. But these three were just, she just missed those. So, and so now we have the controls in place to make sure that Jennifer and I are going to look over them ourself on some of the larger items, and not delegate that to a new employee.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate your explanation, Ms. Callen. Any other comments? Thank you. I don't see any. Thank you so much for us coming in. Ms. Lipson, we appreciate the report. Now, I'll just go through the protocol for the meetings, and then we can get into the agenda. We'll start at number five. After I read the protocol, I'd like to welcome you again to the City of Douglasville's City Council Regular Meeting. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the City of Douglasville. Tonight, the items that we will discuss and vote on will take, will be official action based on what we saw last Thursday in our legislative work session. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under comments from citizens and delegates for you to discuss your business. I ask you, please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts, and that you would address the chair of that committee when you speak, and that everyone be respectful. We only have one person speaking at a time. We ask that you please will not, or refrain from speaking to each other in the audience if you're at the podium. Don't turn around and talk to other people, but just address all of your concerns to the chair. If you have a cell phone or electronic device, we ask that you would put those in silent mode, or turn those off until after the meeting. And this is how the agenda items would be handled. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, then that person or applicant will come forward and present. And tonight, if you have new information to present, we'll ask that you would do that. But if not, you can just stand. If myself and councilmembers possibly have questions, then you can address those questions. Let's see, you have 20 minutes for those in favor of the item, and 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes to speak based on that agenda item. When you come to the podium, please give us your name and address for the record. There is a form or card that you should have filled out, and you can give to the Assistant City Clerk to my right, Ms. Candace, and proceed with your comments. This is not a question-and-answer or debate format. We're just here to receive the information and make a decision. If you have any printed material, we ask that you would please give that to the city clerk, and she will make copies and distribute to us or put on our iPads. So that, all of those instructions, and how we're going to deal with the meeting tonight. So I'll move on then to item number five, and it's the minutes of the Legislative Work Session of February 3, 2022, and the regular meeting and executive session of the meeting of February 7, 2022. I'll put this minutes for approval as an, open the floor for minutes to approve, motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Do we have any corrections or comments from the council?
Second.
Second. Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The minutes are unanimously approved. We'll move on then to the consent agenda. I'll open the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is, are there a second, please?
Sir.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams. It's been properly moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do we have any further deliberation from councilmembers? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is unanimously approved. We'll move on then to item number seven, which is Economic Development Committee, and that's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then to Finance Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have several items tonight under Finance. We'll start with item A, adopt a resolution to update the City of Douglasville's debt management policy as the city's finance department's policy. Karen Callen and Doug Gebhardt of Davenport and Company. Ms. Callen?
Yes, sir. Karen Callen, Finance Director, 6695 Church Street. And as you know, we do have four action items that you'll see before you. But before we go into those, Doug, Doug Gebhardt with Davenport is going to come up and explain to you, or go over our processes, and kind of go back over what we discussed at the strategic planning session.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction, Ms. Callen. Doug Gebhardt, Davenport and Company, 515 East Crossford Road, Roswell, Georgia. Again, great to be in front of you this evening as a follow-up to the retreat that was done a few weeks ago. And I think what's, we're in front of you tonight is a result of some of those financial health updates and policies in place. And what really comes down to is that, really what we can do to better position the city for their financial health going forward, not only for their rating agencies, but also establishing a good working balance going into the future. So, under S&amp;Ps, which is Standard &amp; Poor's, one of the bond credit rating agencies, they have a, a methodology that's called the Financial Management Assessment. And under the, under the, that assessment, the city, as part of their last bond issue, was given an adequate management score with standard financial policies. Our goal is to improve those scores, which would in turn help the bond rating, and in turn, because of a higher bond rating, or an equivalent bond rating, to not jeopardize it going downwards. Not that we, we don't see that happening in the future, but it would position you to do that better going forward. And so there's really seven key areas that this Financial Management Assessment is looking into. And what we're talking about tonight is long-term financial and capital planning, investment management policies, debt management policies, and reserves and liquidity. I think when each item today is going to be addressed, Karen's going to make the changes that, or walks through the changes that we did. But ultimately, what Standard &amp; Poor's and Davenport as the city's financial advisor in this process was, one, to make sure that you're doing these policies right. If there was certain things that they're looking for, that they have the actual policies in place. But two, also to establish the appropriate levels that allows you to, to carry out the projects that need to be done, that you have the capacity to take on some additional things, that you have the appropriate amount of reserves in place. So, one is to make sure that you are doing them, and two is to establish those levels. And all the levels that we are recommending with, in conjunction with staff, are very consistent with highly rated, credit-worthy cities throughout the state of Georgia. And if there's any questions, as you go through any of the individual changes, I'd be happy to assist Ms. Callen as appropriate. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gebhardt. Ms. Callen, did you have a presentation or any other information on that, on each item? We're just going to go through them individually?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right. So you want to, I guess, do we need to read the item A? Or did you read the item yet?
I read item A. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, gotcha. All right. So on the debt management policy, the changes that we made, and I would say out of all the policies, this one had the most changes to it. But we established that, under legal compliance, that the city's tax-supported debt shall not exceed 20% of total general governmental operating revenues. So that's a debt ratio that we are looking at to make sure each fiscal year, and as we issue new debt, which we will be issuing, the Jesse Davis bonds coming up soon, which is another reason why we talked about making sure we updated our policies, because we hope that when we get our next rating, that it'll adequate, will go into strong. So, so that is one point that we made. And the second point is that the city will maintain that the tax-supported debt as a percentage of full value shall not exceed 3%. So that is all the changes we made to the debt management policy.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Callen. Do we have questions, council, Madam Mayor? Anyone have any questions about this item? I know that this is exactly as we had discussed, and we're, we're, had a discussion during our retreat, and this is just putting now in that policy into word form and voting on it. So if there are no other questions or comments, I'll make a motion that we approve item 22-01051.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Stand back.
Thank you. Ms. Candace, did you get?
Councilman Davis.
Councilman Davis. Thank you so much. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-051. Do we have any additional comments or questions from councilmembers? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-051 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item B, adopt a resolution to update the City of Douglasville fund balance policy as the city's finance department's policy. Ms. Callen?
Yes, sir. If you'll remember, we, the last time we adopted the resolution was 2004 for the fund balance, and it was that we kept a minimum of 2.5 million. So it's time to update that. So this policy reads that the unassigned fund balance should be no less than a minimum of 33% of operating revenues, but we want a goal of 50%. So our goal is six months, but 33% is four months. So we're not to go below 33% of operating revenues. Then also, the city manager will discuss the excess over 50%. So any excess that we have over 50% of the fund balance will be discussed, how it should be used at the budget workshop and the strategic planning session.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Questions, comments? Minimum fund balance policy. Any questions? Okay. See none. Make a motion then to approve item 22-072.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve item 22-072. Is there a second, please?
Sir.
Thank you so much. Councilman Watts has been properly moved in second by the Chair, Councilman Adams, and second by Councilmember Watts to approve item 22-072. Do we have any additional comments as it relates to this item from councilmembers? It's quiet. I don't hear any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-072 is unanimously approved.
All righty. Item C, adopt a resolution to update the City of Douglasville's investment policy as the city's finance department policy. Ms. Callen?
Yes, the, two major changes to that is, is each month we send you, the elected officials, the budget report. So now we will be attaching our investment cash and investments report, so that you'll be, you can see those. And then also, the second thing is that securities investment held by the city should carry at least a double A rating. So those are the two changes.
So just raising the quality of the investment that we say that we will make as a city ourselves. Okay. Questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Callen. Seeing none, I make a motion then that we approve item 22-073.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-073. Do we have any additional comments from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-073 is unanimously approved.
Last item, item D, adopt a resolution to update the City of Douglasville's long-term forecasting and planning policy as the city's finance department's policy. Ms. Callen?
Yes, the changes there, we just added that we want to list structural balance as a clear goal. So when we're forecasting our revenue, we want our revenues to exceed or meet our expenses. And then also, we added that this will be presented to you, the long-term planning, forecasting and planning projections will be presented to you at the budget workshop and at the strategic planning session.
All righty. Are there any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, then I make a motion that we approve item 22-074.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-074. Do we have any comments from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-074 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Ms. Callen, and your staff for placing those ideas from our workshop into word form and adopting. We appreciate you. Thank you. That's all, Madam Mayor, that we have under Finance tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on then to Housing and Community Affairs Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
You're welcome.
The next item is number 10, Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have one item tonight, Madam Mayor, and number, so, item eight, is appoint Mr. Richard Siegel to the Douglasville Douglas County Water and Sewer Authority for a five-year term expiring April 2, 2027. Ms. Hampton, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor Robinson announced that the original candidate, former councilmember Charlie Banks, was going to be unable to serve in that term. So she has asked that former Mayor Pro Tem Richard Siegel actually serve in that, in that role on behalf of the city. So this is your candidate.
Okay. Any questions from the mayor and council? If not, I would like to make a motion that we approve 22-065.
Second.
Thank you so much. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-065, to appoint council, former councilmember, Mr. Richard Siegel, to the Douglasville Douglas County Water and Sewer Authority for a five-year term. Do we have any additional comments or questions as it relates to this item? I don't see any. It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-065 is approved. Congratulations, Councilman Siegel.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Personnel and Organization Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in personnel organization.
Thank you, sir. Planning and Development Committee, chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight under Planning and Development. Consider a request for approval of a development plan for Emblem Riverside Phase 2 for 9.636 acres at 51, 1551 Riverside Parkway, located Land Lot 176, District 1, Section 5, Parcel 1. Plan is dated January 31, 2022. Parcel ID number is 0176015001. Application by Ag LMC Riverside Property Owner LLC, care of Taylor Harper. Ms. Anderson?
Ryan Anderson, 6701 Church Street. We don't have any new information as it relates to this, but I can answer any questions that you may have and the applicant's representative is here tonight.
Okay. I was not here on Thursday night when this was originally, I'm sure, discussed. Is there any question or comment that Mayor or Madam, Madam Mayor or any, anyone on the council may have concerning it? Any questions of the applicant? None?
No. They were positive responses, and Mayor Pro Tem and the council representative agreed. It looked well, and it was a good plan.
Mr. Anderson, I always ask the question on a development plan. You know what the question is, so you might as well answer it.
Yes, they meet the requirements.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Seeing no other, then appreciate it, Mr. Anderson, and I will make a motion that we approve item 22-068.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-068. Do we have any comments or questions from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-068 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all that we have tonight.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to Public Improvement and Beautification Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee, chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. PR Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety Committee, chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
I just have no business tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman Davis. Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee, chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you, sir. Technology Committe, Committee chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, we have no business at this time under the Technology Committee.
Thank you, sir. Transportation Committee, chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
We are completed with all of our committees. We've completed our committees. We'll move on then to other business. Is there any other business that come before council tonight from the elected officials? I don't see any. So now we'll move on to updates from our city staff, our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson.
No business, Madam.
Thank you, sir. Our staff attorney, Ms. Lynn Woodward.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mm-hmm. The police department, Captain Dittman.
No business, Madam.
Thank you, Officer Denning. City manager, Ms. Marsha Hampton.
Yes, ma'am. Just a couple things. One, I did send you all an email this week regarding the legislation that is currently being considered by the General Assembly regarding the single-family for-rent communities and the state preempting city's ability to be able to block those developments from happening. This morning, on the Legislative Policy Council meeting with the Georgia Municipal Association, we do suspect that if that bill continues to move forward, it will be approved and it will pass. So basically, what that means is, some of the items that you all have heard, your larger for-rent developers, including America's Home for Rent, and some of the others that you've heard of, they may be coming before you applying for a building permit to develop a neighborhood that would be strictly for rental. So my suggestion to you all is just to give some consideration of how those things will be managed. I'll be getting with the Community Development Department for us to be prepared for that. I do believe the county has already had an application. I'm not quite certain where that has gone to, but I do believe that, that legislation will be approved through the state this legislative session. There was a bill on annexation that would have minimized the city's ability to restrict, or I should say, weigh in on annexation. I do believe that that bill has been modified to allow us to have some of the same rights that we have. So I, I think that bill is moving forward. So all of those two, I think, are the, the big key that you all have asked me about. I'll keep an eye out for some of the others, but we have less than 10 days left in the session. The other is, if you've noticed, you haven't had really many 5:00 PM committee meetings, and that's because a lot of the discussion has been had at your strategic planning session. I suspect that that will continue. So please look at your agendas. If you happen to have an executive session, we're probably going to move that to 5:00 PM to allow for you all to leave early. And also, we are going to be bringing forth to you an ordinance that would change how we handle development plans and final plats, that those matters would be heard, but then placed on the consent agenda based on the language that we currently have in the Unified Development Ordinance. So just be prepared for that. So 5:00, we won't have as much discussion, because we've already talked about a lot of the things that we have going on. Other than that, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, City Manager. I did negate to ask. I apologize. Councilmember Adams mentioned it, March 1 for the service delivery. Is it annexation service delivery?
There's a lost negotiation training that's being held at the Georgia Municipal Association on March 1. If you all take a look at those dates, let me know. I know that they're, myself, the mayor, and Councilman Adams are going. If there are other who, others who are interested, let me know, and we will be able to carpool down to GMA's offices.
Yeah, local option sales tax, that training. Oh, Councilman Watts.
Madam Mayor, I would like to invite any citizens that might be listening or watching to reach out to their representatives on this bill that City Manager has said may pass. They're gonna, they're basically going to take the power of the citizens and their vote for council to determine how their, how their city is developed. I think it's outrageous, and I would encourage anybody within earshot to reach out to representatives. It may pass, but the fact that it'll pass is outrageous, that they're going to take, they're going to impose that on cities. So I just wanted to be on the record how I feel about it.
Yes, sir. Mayor Pro Tem?
I have a question for legal, which would be this. Is there, I don't know how familiar you are with this particular bill, but is there any room left for municipalities to preempt what the bill would be disallowing, as I'm doing it, or can we incorporate rental restrictions into zoning? You know, I understand, but you can't impose once they come to you, but is it possible to incorporate that into zoning in any way?
There is no possibility, because the whole purpose of this legislation is to preempt the local government's ability to do that. But currently, there are some counties and cities that either use zoning designations to regulate, build to rent communities, or use subdivision processes to do that. But once the legislation adopts this pending HB 1093, then that, that control will be taken away from local governments.
So the, I was going to say, the only way you may be able to counter that would be to, to, to not even, not allow multifamily residences. I mean, you'd have to take that out of your zoning, I mean, which would be, you know, virtually impossible. But I mean, if, I'm picturing there have got to be cities, other small communities that, that where you have virtually no apartments in there, and then they would, their only recourse would be to, to literally eliminate anything R2 and above, basically.
So HB 1093 is only regulating single-family detached properties. The point was raised about apartments being pretty much the same thing. Cities, counties concurrently regulate apartments, so why can't we regulate single families? Some of the representatives didn't really see a difference between the two, other than the fact that one is higher density than the other. But it's, a lot of the other representatives and witnesses at the hearing were kind of confused about the purpose of what this bill would do. So it would really help if you all could call your state representatives to let them know that local governments oppose to the state trying to take away local, local government's ability to develop their own communities.
And then one thing I'll add, that they do have strong support.
Is it receiving bipartisan support?
Yes. The Georgia Realtors Association is in favor of this legislation, mainly from a, from what I'm hearing is from a property management perspective. But they are in favor, so of course, these are larger companies that are nationwide, so they have lobbyists that can go down to the Capitol, and there are a lot of individuals who are there. So picking up the phone will be helpful.
Lobbyists with money.
Correct.
Yeah, and from my understanding, we did have a meeting, the Metro Mayor's meeting last week before they voted, and they have 42 attorneys come up to lobby that Wednesday, and we all called our representatives to let them know.
Madam Mayor, I just have one last question for legal, and I understand what her answer to Mayor Pro Tem Miller, but as far as preemptive, can, can the city put size of development, rental development? In other words, can we, can we constrict it that way where those type of developments can only occur on so many acres, not to exceed or?
I haven't seen the final draft of the bill, but I doubt it. I think you're going to have subdivisions treated just like any other subdivision, unless you expect that. As, as a practical matter, the ability of local governments prohibiting single-family rentals, in my opinion, didn't exist anyway. I don't think this bill is taking away your right that local governments really have, but it's trying to make clear that you ain't got the right to start. There are several ordinance that have been passed around the state. A couple of them are being challenged in court now, so I don't, it sounds bad, but at the end of the day, I'm not sure you lost anything you had. Well, one thing that's helpful is when citizens show up, and that's happened, and, you know, developers, you know, they don't always want to make citizens of a community happy, but they will sometimes try if enough people show up.
Thank you so much. Any other comments? City Manager, that's all you have?
That's all I have, yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Now we come to the portion in our agenda where we have comments from citizens and delegates. If you'd like to speak to us, please come forward, and you have five minutes to address myself and council members. Please give us your name and address for the record, and any business that has remained to the City of Douglasville or potential business in the city.
Hello, Madam Mayor. Hello, City Council. Name is Marshall Phipps. Address is F-79 Brookside Court. It's been a while since I've been here. I've had other things tie me down. Also, my grandmother was in the hospital. She's now in rehab. Thankfully, she's better. But I want to give you all just a general update of what's been going on my end. I haven't really stopped on my project regarding Hunter Park. I just had to put it back on the back burner, but I did want to give you all a small update. So I was finally able to actually get around to getting my nonprofit status approved by the state of Georgia, as well as on the federal level, so it is tax-exempt on both levels. It's under the initial misconceived notion of beyond just the federal level, but the bank has since corrected me on that, but I was able to get that rectified. And speaking of the bank, I would like my organization to start taking donations, because I still do want to go continue with my efforts at Hunter Park. I know there's been a real lack of interest on that lately, but given the real prospect of redevelopment and tourism for the State of Douglasville, as well as a potential opportunity